Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2024, Meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Missioners Brodsky?
Here.
Rothman?
Here.
De Placido?
Here.
Laney Martin?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Weinberg?
Here.
Henry? Zappone?
Here.
Carswell? Spiegelman?
Here.
Ball?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Bowman? Vice President Daighy?
Here.
President Hecker?
Here, thank you. Please note the Commissioner Carswell will be joining us late, and Commissioner Bowman is excused this evening. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance looks like the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have one announcement this evening. Item F, which is BOC-08-011124, is being removed from the agenda and will be considered at a later date. And with that, we will move on to public comment on matters on the agenda this evening. If you wish to speak about matters on the agenda, please come forward. And if not, if there's anyone on Zoom, you coming forward? Okay. We'll hold on Zoom for a moment.
First, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, welcome back as we celebrated the birth of our Lord and Savior. It's wonderful to see everybody in a new year. In a little deference to Laura, I would just like to start off by saying the agenda packet's 313 pages long, and you give the people in Abington three minutes to address those issues. And issues like Burckheimer should get a full discussion, like how much does it cost us every year? What other options are there available? I mean, that affects every taxpayer in the township. And it ought to be discussed, and we ought to have an opportunity to discuss it. The second one is, there's an item in there just for a decrease in the number of people on the planning commission. Well, first, my right-
That was the item that I just announced was pulled from the agenda.
That's it, I Xed one off. Okay, thank you. Then I will drop that one. Sorry about that, I didn't catch up.
That's okay.
Number three, as far as boards and commissioners are concerned, there's one, I think it's just going to be a vote on approving the people who are going to be on new boards or commissions. What I would ask is, if each month you could say, hey, these are the commission openings that are coming up or available. I try and keep up, but I still miss a lot of things also. And then, I don't know if the people are here, it would be nice to get a little tiny bit of an introduction into who's on these commissions, just a suggestion. And then finally on that, what's going on with the Economic Development Corporation? I'd like to get some update on that. Number four, is there an opportunity for any kind of a update each meeting from our police? Like, two days ago, we just had an armed robbery on York Road, and then, I mean, I read this in Nextdoor. And the police did an unbelievable job capturing these people, returning the money, finding guns, and basically pulling these thugs off our streets. But it would be nice, like, in the last several months, we've had riots at Abington School District, we had carjackings at the mall. Who knows all what else is going on? There's other things, I just can't think of it right now. It would be great to get some little update, this is what's going on, and then to turn around, we have an officer here, and just say, these people are doing outstanding jobs in a really tough time. And it would be good, just a little bit of recognition for them. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the room wish to speak on matters on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman from Meadowbrook. So, yes, the agenda item, you know, Paul, you deleted, you said, "We're deleting," and you said, "The number." Please say, what exactly is being deleted when you do that? The comment that I'd like to make anyhow is that we cannot delete and dilute our committees. We need more people serving on the committees. You can not, you don't have to change it to seven members, whether you have them now or not. You can leave that open and just post the opening constantly until you have the last two openings filled. We need more people on. The fewer people there are, the less transparent everything is. We need more people to watch over the processes in this township. I don't think anybody knew about the traffic signals. I didn't see that at any other meeting. It seems to be being approved at this meeting without having gone to any committee meeting. Remember our expanded speaking rights, where you were supposed to bring everything to the working session a month early? And then we were supposed to see it in a committee meeting on the next month, and then it would be approved. But instead, it seems that everything has gotten moved up to the working session, which we don't even get to hear it before we comment. And then, you have moved it up again so that now we're not even seeing beforehand. So if this was presented beforehand, it was not listed in the executive summary. I do not recall seeing it. Same thing with the Burckheimer thing that Joe Rooney just mentioned, okay? That should have been at a committee meeting with a robust discussion. When we had regular committee meetings, all properly laid out so we knew what things went to what committee meetings, that was easy. Nobody knows what goes to strategic plan or when the strategic planning committee will meet again. Nobody knows what's in the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee. Nobody knows what those things are. When we had Public Affairs, Public Works, we had Public, what did we have? We had Public Safety for the police report, and then we could talk to the police and talk to the committee commissioner. Those things were in our interest. You've changed them, and now you're moving them up so without a committee meeting, you're passing things. And if I missed the committee meeting, it should have been in the executive summary that this was reviewed on such and such a date. I looked for both of those items, and they were not there, okay? And I just sat in on the EAC meeting last night, where they were trying to figure out how to monitor the meetings, and nobody can understand when the meetings are or what things belong in what meetings.
All right, Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Far that we need to have that changed. And I just want to say, in the working session coming up, we don't have the right documents. And it harms us to have to speak before we hear the presentation. So please allow us in the working session-
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lehman, for your comments. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and for that, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Vahie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda, listed as items A through C. Nice move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move forward to new business, and I will once again turn matters over to Board Vice President Matt Vahie.
The first item is BOC-03-011124, motion to award the traffic signal improvement bid to Lenny Electric Corporation, Inc. in the amount of $251,246.34 for the 2019 Greenlight Grow Intersection Improvement Projects, and authorize the township manager to execute the contract. Nice move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
The next one is BOC-04-011124, motion to adopt Resolution 24-004, authorizing, empowering, and directing the proper officials of the Board of Commissioners to execute an agreement with Burckheimer, where under Burckheimer is retained as the exclusive tax officer for collection, administration, receipt, and enforcement of the revisions of the respective tax enactment of the Board of Commissioners, levying and assessing the local services tax for the term herein defined, together with such extensions as may be agreed upon, said tax enactment having been adopted pursuant to the authority of the Pennsylvania Local Tax Enabling Act, and approving and adopting the rules and regulations prepared by Burckheimer to administer and enforce the local service tax. Nice move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Manfredi, do you wish to comment on this at all before I open it up for questions from the board?
As I'm sure you've read, this was a request that was made by tax collector Blumenthal. He is online, and I think it'd be more appropriate for Mr. Blumenthal to take this item.
Mr. Blumenthal?
So the administration and processing at the tax office has become overwhelming, especially since COVID, where more and more people are working from home. We are inundated with new applications every week, and also new clients, which requires a lot of correspondence, et cetera. I feel that it would be to the benefit of the township and the taxpayers to have Burckheimer collect this tax. They are the tax collectors of our local service tax and many other different townships that do have that tax withheld. It'll be savings to the township in multiple ways. One will be increased cash flow. The other one will be a savings and commission that the township pays. Burckheimer is cheaper than my rate. And also, there will only be no printing charges. There are actual determinable savings expense-wise, but there are also undeterminable projections of what it would save in the way of processing times and collecting on delinquent taxpayers. This could become overwhelming, and for one person to handle it in my department, that's why I've suggested it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Mr. Manfredi?
Yeah, and just to clarify some of the points. Number one, his suggestion will result in one-half percentage point less in commission that we'll be paying to Burckheimer that we currently pay for the collection of that tax. And the avoidance of additional costs of collection that he was referring to with the overhead, that the efficiency, and the only other thing that I think is important to note, that Burckheimer currently collects for the countywide, the earned income tax.
That's right.
So, his rationale, after we sat down and talked through it, understood it, it made sense. If he believes that it's going to cost him more money and us more money, it seemed to be a rational approach.
Thank you. Do members of the board have comments or questions?
I have a question, President Hecker.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Would it be able to do an analysis to determine what savings were acquired at the end of the year? And to report that out?
Yes. We could do that.
I think that would be good for confidence in the community. Thank you.
Sounds good. Commissioner Weinberg?
Thank you. In terms of questions that residents may have regarding the tax, would it go to the tax office, to Mr. Blumenthal? Or would they go to Burckheimer?
A great question, Commissioner. One of the things, first of all, let's talk about the timing. One of the reasons that Mr. Blumenthal didn't touch on is timing. In order to get the bills out, there's also communications that Burckheimer will send. And Jay, I think that might be better for you to talk about the different things that they're going to send out to the taxpayers to make them aware.
Surely. Normally, we have a mailing in January of every year of the four quarters for the employers to report their payments, their withholdings, et cetera. I will not be mailing those out this year. Burckheimer will be mailing them out, and they're not going to charge for printing. Burckheimer will only be collecting, starting in January for, well, starting with 2024, they will be collecting only the local service taxes for 2024. There will be some trailing off that we will end up still processing, which takes us a few months for the fourth quarter of 2023. Burckheimer can process a lot quicker than we can, and they're also not going to charge us for printing because they have their own printing company. Have I asked you your questions, Stuart?
Well, I guess still, in terms of if there are questions from residents, will they go to Burckheimer?
They'll go to Burckheimer, yes. Burckheimer's name are going to be on the bills.
Okay. Let me answer my question.
Everything will be redirected to Burckheimer.
It was my understanding, Commissioner, that in those letters that will be sent, it will be advising, if they have any questions, who to contact and what number to contact. Is that correct, Jay?
Yes, and we'll be corresponding back and forth with Burckheimer. We have a very good relationship with them because of the EIT. And also, Burckheimer has a way of analyzing a lot of these registrations for the local service tax, which could, in fact, kick up somebody that is actually doing business in the township, which would, again, also possibly give us more revenue on the business privilege and mercantile tax, which we may not find out for a while otherwise.
Mr. Blumenthal, could you just briefly describe what the local services tax is so people understand what component of the tax bill we're actually talking about?
Local service tax is a $52 max a year for an employee, but they have to earn $12,500, I believe it is. And it's earmarked, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeanette, it's earmarked mainly for fire, police, and highways. It does not go into the general fund.
Thank you.
Yes, and it's only for people that are working in the township.
In the township.
Yes, so every week, I get multiple requests. I had a few today. Somebody could be in Wisconsin, and the company's in Wisconsin, and they're hiring a person that lives in Abington.
Got it. Commissioner Schreiber?
Just in case anybody's confused on that, it's the employer that is paying Burckheimer, not the average citizen. Is that correct?
Burckheimer is collecting the local service tax for any employer that employs a resident, somebody in Abington Township.
The average citizen is not going to be dealing with Burckheimer on this unless they're an employer?
They may deal with Burckheimer where they're requesting a refund if they don't hit that max of $12,500 a year. If they don't earn $12,500 in a year, they don't have to have it withheld. So sometimes, people have it withheld, and then they request refunds from us. They will then be, they will deal with Burckheimer or something like that, not us. So there can be some interaction between employees in Abington and with Burckheimer. I will tell you that I do handle a lot of problems in my office that are Burckheimer issues, and I help people out with that. So if there are any trailing questions dealing with this, I will certainly, my office will certainly help the residents of Abington to work through this.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Not at this time, Mr. Rooney. You can ask a question at the end of the meeting if you so wish. Understood, but we've had public comment. We're now in the middle of discussing. Mr. Rooney, you understand the rules of public participation? If you have a question? I do, and we're going to move ahead to vote. If you have a question about this, that is correct. I am exercising my authority as the presiding officer, and we are moving ahead. Mr. Rooney, we're not going to do this. We're going to move on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is BOC-05-011124, motion to appoint members to the various boards and commissions, committees, and councils, as included in Exhibit A. Nice move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-06-011124, motion to approve a settlement regarding the appeal of the zoning hearing board decision regarding 974 Leopard Road, and authorize the solicitor to execute the stipulation of settlement and take all necessary steps to resolve the appeal. And I so move.
Second.
The matter has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item of new business is BOC-07-011124, motion to adopt a resolution number 24-006, designating a depository for Abington Township funds. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Is that your hand up, Commissioner Weinberg? Yeah, go ahead.
Can we just get a little bit of background about this?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. The township has as a depository a current financial institution that our office, the tax office, works with to deposit all the funds, anywhere from $80 million to $92 or $93 million throughout the course of a year that has transacted. We periodically will take a look at what is happening in terms of services with that institution, or if there are other conditions that warrant a review of whether or not we should continue or go out for a request for proposals from other institutions. We believe it was necessary to begin the process of requesting proposals from other financial institutions to assure that the dollars that we are responsible for, that other people's money, meaning the taxpayers, is being handled appropriately, that we're earning the greatest interest that we can, and that we are doing everything that we can to secure those dollars from the moment it leaves the hand or the account of a taxpayer or a citizen paying a permit to the time that it is in a bank and expended and approved for expenditure by this board. We issued a request for proposals. We actually sent, not only advertised, but sent 15 to various financial institutions. There were four that responded and that were evaluated. God bless you. Two that declined submitting, and nine that never responded to our request for proposals. After doing a thorough review, and I'm going to ask Ms. Herman to rise to the podium and talk a little bit about this as well so everyone can understand. But when we went through a lot of it, we decided and are recommending that the board consider Fulton Bank because of their proposal. There are a number of things in their proposal that are, we believe, significant, especially that the interest rate that will earn return, some of the consulting services that they provide, as well as enhanced and remote deposit, and other things that are typically done in the background. You know, we are currently with Republic Bank, and while Republic Bank has had a, treated our tax office and our finance office with customer service, we believe it's an appropriate time to move from our current institution to another, which is why we went out for a process to find that institution. Ms. Herman, if you would.
Township manager Manfredi mentioned many of the criteria that we did review, including the interest rates and so on and so forth. We also looked at the website banking features, the branch location, and the fees. In addition to that, some of the more important things were the consultative services. We want to make the process for deposits more efficient. We believe handling remote deposit throughout the township rather than in specific locations will greatly benefit the time inefficiencies that all employees are currently undergoing. The Fulton Bank, as the banks are required for local governments, is Act 72 collateralized, so all of our dollars will be collateralized, as they have been as well with Republic Bank. We also checked in about security features, and they do include all of their security features and have not had any cybersecurity threats that are known. So those were important factors as well. The fees were comparable. The interest rate was slightly higher, actually, than we currently have. The branch location is about seven miles from Abington Township, but we don't feel that we will need to visit the bank on a regular basis using remote deposit and the other efficiencies. And the consultative services are important for my office because we want to make things more efficient and tighten up, you know, the number of bank accounts we're using and the processing methods that we're undergoing in order to save taxpayer cost and greatly benefit all of the work of all of the township employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the motion is to approve Fulton Bank as the new depository bank?
Yes.
That's the motion?
That is the motion.
All right. And do you see, I mean, all the paychecks, all our checks normally go through Republic Bank, now going to be have to switch it over to Fulton? Do you see any problems with operation, getting all that stuff over?
No, the township has been through bank changes a few times during my career here, so we're very familiar with that in the finance office.
And it's something that would take effect immediately?
It will take effect, we're thinking and hoping, 30 to 60 days from now. But that depends on how many features and changes I decide to make in the short term rather than the long term.
Okay. And that would, enough time to prepare you for all the operations that have to switch over?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the new business tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Vahie will now move on to matters of the Finance Committee, and for that, I will turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item, FC011, excuse me, FC01011124, motion to approve the November 2023 expenditures in the amount of $2,389,267.68, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,183,033.57, and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2024. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Missioners Brodsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
De Placido?
Yes.
Laney Martin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Weinberg?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Zappone?
Yes.
Carswell?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman? Vice President Vahie?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Back to you, Commissioner Weinberg.
Next item, FC02011124, motion to adopt Resolution number 24-005, authorizing the finance director and his/her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by First Class Township Code. And I so move.
It has been moved and seconded. It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Last item is FC 03 011124, motion to adopt resolution number 24 dash 007, authorizing the disposition of certain finance office records as set forth in Exhibit A. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that would conclude the finance agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We'll now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name.
Before I speak, I get very little time to speak, and if you want to answer a question, I'd really appreciate it, but when I'm finished, not while I'm talking, because then I end up with less than three minutes. And I haven't got an answer. Okay, my name is Adele. I see it moving right now, and I'm stating my name. Is it going to go back to three minutes? Are you moving it back to three minutes?
Please continue.
I would like it move back to three minutes.
And you can either spend your time arguing this or get to what it is you wish to say.
It is now close to three years that I have been asking this administration to address the expanding and constant, I mean, it's constant blight. Raymour and Flanagan is surrounded, has a parking lot surrounded by blight. I have been told numerous times that the dump site, hidden by overgrowth, would be remediated. No actions that would force Raymour and Flanagan to make repairs have been taken. Instead, Mr. Clark has asked for three continuances for the case. These continuances and other township holdups have created over a year of delays. At this point, it seems the township has no intention of ever holding Raymour and Flanagan accountable for the extensive environmental blight. Mr. Weingard has failed to follow through with his assurances that the blight would be remediated. Mr. Manfredi has cited numerous efforts, yet there's been no improvement. Last month, off camera, Mr. Rothman told me that he's fine with the complex being surrounded with liquor bottles, food scraps, plastic containers, oil barrels, gas containers, car parts, folding chairs. And I have photos of the mattresses and the enormous amount of garbage. This is funny? I don't think so. This starts at Bridal Waters and extends all the way down to the Baderwood complex. It is a large acre-filled dump, acres. Other blighted Abington areas, 1582, Edge Hill Apartments still has yards of demolished curb sign. The township won a judgment against the apartment owner. After winning the judgment, Mr. Clark withdrew the case. Why was the case judgment withdrawn? The township won. Now the street curbing is disintegrating further. That's not funny. That's pathetic. No answers. I've asked for three months here for the same thing. I'm repeating questions. Zip's Cleaners has two broken benches in front of the store. These benches present Abington as seedy. Replace the benches would be an easy fix. I've been asking for over a year and a half, replace the benches. That's not expensive. Abington Jefferson Hospital property should not be a crime magnet and an eyesore. The hospital is speculating and creating blight. This building is across the street. I'm told you're going to go look at it. My gosh, you rent space there. They're paid rent so that they can have blight there. Mr. Manfredi continues to cut back on basic maintenance.
Ms. Kubel, your time has expired. Please conclude your comments, and I did give you extra time.
Street maintenance employees are essential and not highly paid. Mr. Manfredi cuts back on these employees to pay for corporate consultants and wealthy developers.
Ms. Kubel, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
Mr. Manfredi and Mr. Clark need to go.
Ms. Kubel?
Look.
Please take your seat.
Why would you giggle and laugh when I show blight like this?
Ms. Kubel, you must take your seat.
When do I get answers?
You must take your seat.
You will not get one.
Please take your seat. Does anyone else wish to speak? If so, please come forward.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney. Just for Adele, this is a township ordinance right here. It is the general nuisance in Article 1. If you look at those pictures, that's in violation of Section 108-5 and 108-9. And there's your authority right now. Please read them, and you can see what the problem is. And we'll go down and pick it up if you all won't take care of it, because somebody's got to take our township. So I got to, I'll try and get these issues in as quick as I can. First, what I wanted to talk about with the local tax was, it seems to me that you all didn't understand what the local service tax is, just from listening to the comments and the questions, and I still have a question about it. The second one is that we don't know how much it costs, and the third one appears to be that it wasn't discussed before it was voted on tonight. Even the Finance Committee Commissioner didn't have the answers. So I just think it's irresponsible that we're doing something like this that's affecting an unknown number of workers in Abington Township without fully understanding it on the board before we vote on it. The second one is a crime issue that I started on before. I went up to Home Depot, and I know that it's in Horsesham area, but all of the portable hand tools are now not out on display. It's really, it's really amazing when you see that. I have some friends at work in Rite Aid and in CVS, and you talk to them. The theft that's going on is very troublesome, okay? And I'm sure that our police officers could tell us a little bit more about what's going on. I don't own a business in the township, but we certainly have to have a lot of sympathy and support for those people. And in reference to what Adele brings up, you cannot be good if you look bad. If we have trash all over Old York Road, then people coming out here are more apt to rob, choplift, rob banks, and stuff like that. We can pass all the ordinances that we want. If we don't enforce them, then we're a bunch of chumps. We're just writing paper. Please read this stuff and support it. We've got problems with petty crime with big crimes here. We don't need more ordinances. We need good ordinances that are written to be enforced, and then we need bad ones to be dumped. If we can get rid of people off the planning commission, we can get rid of junky ordinances, too. Just take the time and do that. The third one is just for everybody. I hope everybody knows that the county raised our taxes 12.8%. I know the township's talking about increasing fees, and that's being added on to the township. The school district is putting out a survey right now, and they're looking at borrowing another $200 million to do work on the buildings. But all that's got to come out of borrowed money, and there's a survey. Please look at their survey online and read it. I think the survey is disingenuous, if not dishonest. And they're actually giving the survey to fourth and fifth graders and asking them about what they think of the capital improvement projects in our township. It's nuts. It's nuts. I have more stuff. I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else in the room wish to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Karen Milovich, you're unmuted.
You hear me?
We can now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple things. I think that there does seem to be a little bit more transparency with everything. I looked at your financial statements, and it really, they made no sense. It didn't tell me what employees' salary ranges are, it didn't tell me how many employees. I'm curious if employees of Abington pay any of their own benefits, because most corporations pay at least 30 to 50% of their own benefits. So I'm curious about that, but we have no information on that. Our taxes have gone up close to 50% in five years, which is astronomical. And I think, like other residents have cited, our, everything in our township is really going downhill. Really, we're just seeing a lot of crime. We're seeing everything, a lot of trash. At 529 Berkeley, we have a smashed car, totally inoperable, that's been there for nine months. And it's the blight in every sense of the word, and actually dangerous, because I'm sure it's got gas and other fluids in it. No one will do anything. And people keep telling us, oh, well, as long as the car had an active inspection sticker. But that's actually not the law. The law is if it's inoperable, it's got to go. But the mall across the street is a mess. There are shopping carts everywhere. There's trash everywhere. There's people that just sit on our lawns because they've been shopping and they're waiting for the bus. We have a bus that sits there that idles in the turning lane, and we have to smell their fumes. So we have, actually, across the street, we have a panhandler that we were told is private property. But I can tell you, if I decided to have a band or a panhandler dancing to Michael Jackson in front of my property, I'm sure Abington Township would find me. So there's all kinds of things that go on that really are taking our community downhill. And I do hope you can answer some of the financials for us, that do people pay any percent of their own medical? Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
Ross Abel, you're unmuted.
Ross Abel, Upland Avenue. I wanted to just quickly note that our roads in the township and across the states are getting deadlier and deadlier for pedestrians and folks on bikes, the handicap. As vehicles get larger and heavier, and we seem to be more and more moving towards this car-centric kind of nation, I would strongly advocate for Abington to take significant, firm actions to pursue truly great best-in-class pedestrian and bike infrastructure, traffic calming, automated enforcement, and any way we can get that makes the streets safer for everyone, not just those in vehicles. Separately, I wanted to support an update to the Bike Master Plan to include physically protected lanes for cyclists. And I would love the support of the township for green space near Noble for our residents who currently are lacking green space. And lastly, I wanted to support a notion that a lot of the folks on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan seem to want to do, which was to dedicate a committee moving forward that would support the enactment of a lot of the great ideas that were in the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. Mr. Abel would be surprised to know that I went to a meeting where traffic calming measures included adding large apartment buildings. I said, how does that calm traffic? They said, well, you can't drive fast because you'll run somebody over. Literally, that literally happened. So, and it was right at York and Susquehanna where the picture was of the apartments and the increase in traffic. So, and that calms it down. You can't go fast through such a crowded intersection. Mr. Hecker, it harms us for you not to answer questions and for you to actually have us comment on items before we hear what you intend to do with them. We don't hear the details that you hear to make your decision. And it harms us, not just in the working session, but in this session, too. You have changed the speaking rules so dramatically that you have harmed every resident in Abington when a few people actually still take their time to come to these senseless meetings that you're running, because you've taken all of our rights away. And now you've taken them away such that things don't even get committee meetings. They go right to the Board of Commissioners and get voted in, and you called that expanded speaking rights. And the way you presented it was sheer fraud. So I need you to think about what you've done and to try and change it. You were elected by people to do things in their interest. Went to the court this week and sat on my birthday through two court cases for 100 York Apartments. One where, if you had been there, you would see how tragically these residents are being harmed. 118 pages of just disgusting pictures from Steve Klein's renovation on the property, his lack of renovation to the property. These people are harmed every day from this, and we are paying. The way you've handled this, the taxpayers are now paying, and we paid for a code enforcement guy to be there happy afternoon, a lawyer to be there, and we paid, and they didn't even press the judge to make sure that the 100 York Apartments got penalties for what they were doing. She said the things that you, that Judge Price said, that the things that are being brought back here, again, that you didn't do, if you do them by March, I'll dismiss these citations. That's absurd. We can't have that. That means the taxpayers are footing the bill for all these negligences, and you had an attorney there whose job it was to press for the people of Abington, who he was representing.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
I will. Let me, let me just finish real quick, please, okay? Because our right-to-know office also is not properly answering right-to-nos, and I'll show you the email. But, Mr. Hecker, I need you to address these things. It seems that certain people, like Raymour and Flanagan and...
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. We are adjourned.